Yeah, I'm gonna take some of these up here. This, I'm guessing you didn't come to find out about the events at the Tudor House. But, and I don't say that, and I'm sure we're happy to have you guys here. Uh, but we have some agents, this, this area, so there's cattle news, and there's also a, uh, list of the events, uh, family events out at the Tudor House. So I'll get a few more of those, and pick one of those up when you have them. Thank you, and just for the council.
Good evening, I got to welcome you to the City of New Franklin, company. Um, Wednesday equal nineteen, and it's at six oh four, and I'd like to turn it over, turn the meeting over to Andy.
We'll open up laws and ordinance is at six oh four. I can't imagine why you're all here. Uh, I will say, I'm not directly involved, but I have seen something. And, uh, being the violator of that ordinance myself.
And you'll say that.
No longer, no longer in my, I had, at one point. Um, I, I, I think that the ordinance probably need to be addressed. Um, certainly it's addressed, we, chicken, take a very small piece of property, uh, the two acres, I think these two acres are what some of it is, I think a little bit large for that, but, um, I'm gonna throw it to Kevin who asked quite a bit more to say.
So, I, I got involved in this midday Saturday, somebody had messaged me, asked what my stance was on chickens, and we had this whole conversation back and forth, but, uh, it basically stems from a resident getting a violation letter for having chickens on a parcel that doesn't mean what our current code reads, our zoning code. Our zoning code was in four, or actually this part, I guess, according to Berry, was, uh, adopted in two thousand nine, so it's been there for quite a while. And our zoning guys, they're not out looking for people who are actually breaking this, this law. Uh, somebody actually had, did a, uh, anonymous complaint about it. So they got, they got the complaint, they went out to look at it, and that's when they left the letter, apparently they left a note for somebody else. So, had some, had some discussions, messaged back and forth with the, the resident. Uh, I did a bunch of research on my end, uh, starting out with, uh, New Franklin, our zoning ordinance is eight hundred oh three D, and that's the one, it's got a little chart there, it basically spells it out as to, uh, if you're a subdivision, plotted subdivision, which the majority of us out here aren't, unless you're in some of the old farm lots and stuff. Uh, it, it speaks to you need two acres or more to have chickens. And then if you're not a plotted subdivision, it's one acre. Uh, I looked around at some of the other communities, Akron, you know, they, they allow chickens, we just gotta be like hundred foot separation, but they're lot size. Uh, Bath, they allow chickens, Green, they have a process, they allow chickens, but then there's like a certification process, where you follow some of the rules, then you get your certificate, you have chickens. Uh, Cogwell Falls, they've got certain areas they allow chickens, which goes off to the rest of the northern camping areas and stuff. But as of last month, they were revisiting allowing chickens everywhere in the city because they had enough of a push rack on it. Uh, and the city of Hudson allows chickens. So with the goal that being said, uh, you know, sort of thinking, how can we address this, how can we, you know, cause I, I don't agree with the two acres as well. I think that's a bit excessive, cause what can you do on two acres if you can't do on one point eight or one point seven, or whatever, you see what I'm going with that. But, uh, in, in looking at the various residential districts and stuff, there's some residential districts, depending on how they're defined, you couldn't even have chickens because of the typical size of lot and stuff. So, once again, made the post out there on Facebook, it kinda got this whole thing going. Then there's some, some conversation out there about reaching out to me, which I got a ton of emails, which I'm, thanks for that. Gave me a lot of good insight on, you know, the amount of people that's actually supporting this. Uh, I think I got thirty different emails, there's hundreds of comments on, on the various posts and everything. So in looking at doing this, uh, we, we're currently going through a comprehensive plan, which is gonna look at what we wanna do with the, the city moving forward, you know, the residents are contributing to that. And it does make a lot of sense for us to go in and actually make, you know, tweaks to the zoning code right now, because we're gonna be looking at making major overhauls to this, you know, after we get the results back from the comprehensive plan moving forward. This is a, a longer process. Uh, and actually, just before you guys got here, we're going over, uh, a diagnostic of our comprehensive plan, and we're, we're basically paid a consultant to look at it and tell us all the things that needs changed. So in order to kind of address this issue, moving forward, and then we can actually, I don't know if it'd be an ad hoc committee, or, or how that would be done, we start looking at doing the, the zoning rewrite. Now, maybe it's bringing people who have knowledge of this, and then I'm sure there's other things other than chickens that we need to address when it comes to animals and rekeeping them, size of lots, and restrictions and requirements and all that stuff. But what, what I'd like to see, and I'd like to get council's opinion on this, if we maybe put a moratorium on enforcement of this particular code, in the zoning code, until, you know, let's just say at a time, and that, maybe a year out, and at that point, if, if we're not to a place where we've got this handled, we extend it out. But maybe there's a moratorium going forward on enforcement of this actual zoning code, and that way, you guys can be as you are, and then we address this with actual language and make it where it actually fits and works for everybody. So I, I don't know what council's thoughts are.
I, I agree, I'm one hundred percent with Kevin on, on moratorium. Um, I think, I, I, I mean, who knows, uh, two thousand nine, what that was, based off of, or who came up with this, maybe they didn't have chickens, maybe like chickens, I don't know. It could just been, fell into a, a whole farm animal type thing. Uh, again, that's, I think I'm only a third of the acre, and, um, we, we did have chickens, it was like an eight by twelve, uh, pen and coop. Um, took up very little bit of your yard, they don't really do much, unless you let them free range, that's a whole nother issue. But they didn't, uh, I mean, uh, I, I, I did ask my neighbors, and I haven't complained, we had to take care of a few roosters. Uh, but other than that, that was, that was, uh, because we didn't want more chickens.
And that's essentially, you know, like.
Uh, but yeah, I agree with Kevin that, uh, a moratorium could be, I mean, is it silly to, to not?
I think most of us have begun, but probably people in the audience want to share some of your stories.
Absolutely, and, and one reason I'm suggesting moratorium is, we could simply say, not have or people act on it. But that kinda puts them in a, you know, kind of a strange place, because, but you act on it for one person, not another, and now they're kinda getting caught in the middle on judgment here at the house, and just put a straight moratorium on it, that actually protects them as well from making judgment calls and so on.
All right. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll do it.
All right. Um, I, I have a concern with, uh, doing a moratorium. Uh, I agree that we need to look at our zoning code, uh, in this case, and, uh, come up with, uh, whatever recommendations, uh, makes sense. Uh, we have a large group of people here that are obviously in favor of chickens, and, uh, having them in their yard, and all the benefits of the chicken. But this all came about because there was a complaint, an anonymous complaint. So there is a group of people, whether they're your neighbors, uh, that have a concern, that have a concern with whether it's the noise, the smell, the, uh, chickens coming in their yard, whatever the issue is, there, there's a concern out there. And for us to not look at that side of the issue, uh, I think is unfair for that side. We're, you know, we're reacting to a, I am so happy to see everybody here today, this is just absolutely fantastic. Uh, and, and I certainly don't disagree with your concerns and what you want to, to do, uh, but I just feel that if, you know, we're reacting to one, and, and I think that would be unfair, uh, for us to, to do that. So, that's my opinion.
Um, I, I see the point, I see exactly what you're saying. Um, I don't know that we wanna jump right now on anything major, and I guess, I don't really know whether there's anything between a moratorium and doing nothing, um, or not. I guess that, you know, we might need to talk to the law director to find that out. Um, I'm very happy to see everybody here, I was kinda excited when I saw it on Facebook, I'm like, oh, we got an issue, people are gonna show up. These seats are set up every week, every, every week, and there's, you know, if you watch us on, on, you know, video, you see, see they're all empty. Um, I think, my guess is that somebody in two thousand nine copied and pasted some language out of something else. Somebody was looking at some code from some, some, some other city or something, and said, okay, well this section fits in here, and might not have even seen the, the chicken comment in there. Um, I totally agree, two, two acres is completely arbitrary, um, but I have some concerns. Uh, I, I'm, I'm on a plot of farmland, so I'm not, I'd be in the one acre thing, and I'm fine. But I had somebody way behind my property that had numerous roosters, that were very clock confused. You know, they didn't have any comprehension for what morning was, or I would minus six AM wake up call, but it was, you know, one of them was twenty-four hours a day, and then they finally felt without. Um, so there are some concerns. My hope is that when we do look at the zoning code, whatever we do moratorium wise, um, that we really take the residents' feedback, and tonight might be a great opportunity for those of us who don't have chickens, or don't have lots the size that you have, don't have the circumstances that you have, to learn a little bit. So, um, I don't know if we wanna do it, this is committees that we're doing now, and we'll have the regular meeting.
Just go get.
Yeah, and my bad idea to just go, so whatever you wanna do, you're the president, but.
I would say fine, I, I like your point, what you have to say.
What's Terry's thoughts?
Terry, do you agree?
Yeah.
It also was pretty worth, uh, with Mr. Cos there, that, yeah, maybe, um, we have to think about the other side of the coin as well, uh, but we just kinda pump the brakes a little bit on any sort of, anything right now, maybe Kevin said just right here, or purely, but maybe just something till we figure something out, that solution. Clearly, I don't think we want to storm whoever's yard and.
And, 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 yes, their chickens, you know, um, I think we deserve to be able to have a, there is, as well, but I also don't understand the, the, I, I.
I, I, I have a question, could, could the, the person that got the letter, go to the BZI for, for a variance? Would that be, uh? I, I don't know, it's not, it's not a structure, it's an activity on, but it's in the zoning code, so could they say, okay, you know, I'm not in compliance, I don't, I don't have two acres?
Or condition of use?
Yeah.
But to fill with the variance, I mean, doesn't, it's like a four hundred dollar bill to get a variance and go through that process. And the, and I, I agree and appreciate your point, but in this case, the, as an anonymous, you know, you know who to get back in touch with to follow up with.
Which is always frustrating. I understand, but, but still, the point is, is that there was a complaint, and, uh, because there was someone that took the time to make a phone call, write a letter, send an email, whatever it was, uh, how many other people are out there that just sit in their house, uh, stewing, saying, why do I have to put up, it's like, I wish there was something I could do, but, you know, there's nothing I can do, and blah, 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 blah. Uh, you know, that are very frustrating, uh, and, you know, and we're just going to say, well, you, you didn't come to a meeting, so we're gonna ignore you. Uh, you didn't make a Facebook post, so we're gonna ignore you, uh, type of thing. And, and again, I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, we need to outlaw chickens, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying that, that we need to be aware of, there's another side to it, and, uh, that's just a concern.
Well, I guess, something we could do is try to, as council members, is try to find the other side. Um, and if Facebook doesn't necessarily work for finding this, picking up the other side, because you get an anonymous complaint, that anonymous complaint could be that the person doesn't like the way their driveway looks, and they don't like the person, so they said, oh, I'm gonna complain about their chickens, so it might not have anything to do with chickens. Um, but we can do some research, we can reach out to people and say, hey, if, if you, you know, I'll make a comment on Facebook, and say, if you've got a problem with chickens, send me a private email or a private message on Facebook or whatever, so that we can find out, and, yeah, like, like we went through with some other debates up here, we, we hear opposition, 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 and then we find out, holy cow, there's a huge other cycle, so, you know.
So, I'm, I'm gonna, um, I just had a couple of thoughts. Um, the first thought is.
Bam.
Like, you don't have to tell what you're saying, well, wait a minute, now, I, maybe I shouldn't ask that question. I mean, what I wanna say is, how many people have chickens? Uh, all right, okay. All right. That's, all right, so let me say this, and I don't mean, I, I, I won't be facetious or, or lighthearted about this law, and, so, from the standpoint of a moratorium, one thing we might wanna consider, uh, would be, uh, we certainly don't want selectively enforce this, all right? So, and Mr. Cos is correct, that, you know, you take notice that, you know, we, I, zoning didn't go out and start looking for chickens and find somebody to cite them, okay? The problem came to us, we can go to the problem. Um, but, but to selectively, uh, perceive a violation on this particular individual when apparently there are others who have chickens, don't raise your hands again, you have a right to remain silent. Uh, so, what, I, I think what we could consider, and, and just take a, you know, little time to process this, a couple days or whatever, a, a moratorium on, on enforcement, uh, I will tell you the first blush, I'd be more open, mind, I would be more inclined towards an open-ended one, rather than a time period, rather than say, you know, so, that at present in moratorium, uh, that would also include a, a provision, you know, a moratorium as to existing situations. Now, how are we gonna prove that? I don't know, I'm not sure, but because of this, a whole bunch of people are gonna go out and get chickens, okay? But we don't wanna put a moratorium on, and then have somebody put two hundred chickens on a half acre lot, okay? Because there's a moratorium, there's nothing we can do about it, all right? So I would, I would be thinking that we, I think we would write this in such a way that, you know, as to existing such situations, that there's a moratorium on enforcement, while council considers, you know, amendments, et cetera, uh, and I would, I'm thinking that there probably ought to be an exception in there for cases where, uh, you know, that, as to nuisance, all right? Uh, so that there is a vehicle, maybe for a neighbor to say, that's all well and good, but this is driving me crazy, all right? So I think we could craft something like that, present it to council. I will tell you that, in the meantime, while we're working on that, we're not gonna, we, you know, we would not proceed on enforcement of this, there was a ten day notice, I don't know if that person's here, don't raise your hand, and you can't talk to me later if you want to.
Right here.
All right, all right, wear your shirt, wear your shirt. Uh, so, yeah, so, you know, we, we, you know, you don't have to be concerned about that at this point in time, all right? And, and I think we could, you know, try to proceed in that fashion, and, and, and then give council a chance to, uh, to, to decide, you know, the best way to approach this thing, uh, going forward from there. So we can, I could work on crafting something like that.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, and, and get that to council. Uh, and then in the meantime, you can rest assured that, that we won't do anything, it's probably something we would have to address at the next council meeting, uh, which would be, we're just two weeks away on that one, so, uh, I, I think, hopefully that'll help.
So, so if, um, hopefully we didn't take all the, one of your sales, but, um, if you'd like to speak of, uh, uh, chicken gate, we'll need, we'll need name and address, and, uh, we'll start, okay, sir, we'll start with that, I'm sorry.
Uh, my name's Tim Lusk, so, some of you know me, I'm actually on the planning sub permission. Uh, so this is kind of some of the stuff that we've talked about in the planning commission, just to make everybody aware. Uh, there's, one of the things we heard back from our citizens is farming, agriculture, as in small hobby type farms, uh, we heard a lot about, uh, farmer's market. Um, I'm huge on that idea, I'm huge on eggs and, you know, fresh stuff. So, I actually just started having chickens myself. I live on a little bit more acres, so it doesn't really affect me, cause I got twelve acres, but, um, I can understand the nuisance. Um, I think that there does need to be a provision, like Mayor Anderson said, for nuisance animals. Uh, also, there needs to be a cleanliness standard, you know, not everybody keeps their dogs clean, let alone chickens. So I can understand, uh, having a neighbor that doesn't keep their chicken pen clean, or they just throw the, you know, shavings or something in a pile next to your fence. So I think there needs to be provisions for enforcement of cleanliness standards, and also, you know, nuisance noise. Um, but I'm all for people having chickens, regardless of the size of the lot, I mean, in Akron, where I came, Firestone Park, there were people in the neighborhood that had chickens. Uh, you didn't generally smell them, you didn't generally hear them, every now and again, when we'd get out, we'd go running around, but that was about it. Uh, so, I think that we can deal with this through a smart, uh, I guess, open end letter at this point, and this is something we can roll into our comprehensive plan. Uh, I think that's kinda what this comprehensive plan is designed to handle, designed to do, to give voice to all the citizens. So I think that this is a perfect example of somewhat of a moratorium, with, with a little bit of an exception there, um, but I like what Kevin had to propose about proposing a moratorium as far as enforcement of certain aspects. Thank you.
Do you have, you have, did you?
Well, um, would this only, I'm sorry, my name is Janine Hoborn, I, um, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, my address.
Sorry.
Yeah, I need my address, so he doesn't come and get me. So would this only, uh, include chickens, or this moratorium, or could it include bees?
Do we have anything on?
Birds?
We do.
What?
I said, do we have anything on bees in our code?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're in, okay.
What is the, what is the contention?
What question are you, the bees?
Uh, the bees is the same, I believe, and, um, uh, yeah, you have to have, I think it's the same, where you have to have two acres for the subdivision, one acre for, it falls under the same category. However, where I'm at, in the business district, I have five and a half acres, and I cannot have any agriculture, so I'm not allowed to have chickens, turkeys, ducks, or bees, um, because.
I think, I think, not to cut out there, I think, but we're gonna have to look at the current, what's on in front of us, but we'll also look into those as well, because , uh, obviously, as Kevin's saying, we're going, we're currently going through our zoning right now, and, um, that's clearly something that would be interesting, you have five acres.
I think we can address it from the standpoint of moratorium with, uh, enforcement of that section of the code, because that section of the code is enormous, as you know, it has everything in there, except circumstantial.
It's originally designed.
So I think if we, you know, if we approach it that way, but continue to carve out that exception for, uh, for situations that might otherwise be considered a nuisance, uh, so we have some protection for, uh, property owner perhaps, to come and bring that to our attention too. Thank you.
Mr. Cos, hold on, go forward.
Um, so, the good news is, is you actually already have those rules, cause I copied it, and I, I was trying to find what section it was actually in, but it says housing of animals, all domestic animals, whether harbored for agriculture, for any other purpose, shall be properly sheltered and maintained in such sanitary conditions as not to be offensive to the neighbor, neighboring properties according to general accepted agricultural practices. And, I mean, that's a really good rule right there, because it says that you have to do your job, but if you get that neighbor that doesn't like your driveway, and you guys come out, you send somebody a prompt check, it's like, well, no, they, they're doing everything they're supposed to, then it doesn't, you know, complaint doesn't really matter. And then, and then, uh, section eight hundred point zero three, subsection five, it actually doesn't have a rule there for any kind of foul, it ends the sentence with, you have to be a hundred feet away from your neighbor's house, which actually makes sense, and then the next sentence says you can't have horses on less than two, two acres. Um, so those two right there would actually cover the concerns, cause you have to be sanitary, which, if you're not keeping your animals in a sanitary way, then you're not doing a good job, um, it defeats the purpose of it.
Well, you're helping me define a, a moratorium. It's already, it's already, no, I, and, and, I, I'll say two things, one before I forget. Um, we haven't, you know, we haven't had a lot of complaints, so that's the good news, okay? Uh, I would say that there, that's not to say that there aren't people sitting at home grinding their teeth, okay? But normally, they reach out to us, so, apparently, whatever you're doing, if you're, you're doing it in a way that's either not offensive to your neighbors, or they just love you, or they're afraid of you, take your pick. But I, I think we can also, you know, and when we, well, take a hard look at this, you know, at the, I, I've looked at it already, and it's, it's a perfect example of why we are, what you walked into previously, we're going over a full diagnostic of our code, because a lot of it is old township stuff, and then we became a village, then we became a city, and it's just kinda patchwork together, and that's why you see some of these funny results. Uh, but, uh, I, I think, we, we'll take a good look at what provisions are in there, and I think that we can write a moratorium in a way that says, we're not enforcing this, on the other hand, we're still gonna expect people to comply with that, you know, so that, uh, we, we avoid inherent problems. Um, because there's a good chance more people are gonna go get some chickens and do something with it. And, yeah, yeah, and, and if it was a full disclosure, I got a brother-in-law who's got chickens, God bless him, and, uh, love him dearly, and, and does a good job with them, so.
I, um.
We don't want a new Franklin, so.
My name's Gemma, I live on Bone Drive. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, we have chickens, we moved here to Ohio for my husband's work, we moved from Georgia, um, and we rented in Akron, and the reason we didn't buy a property in Akron is because it doesn't have the kind of rural environment that we find peaceful and enjoyable. We specifically bought in New Franklin to have things like chickens, and to be surrounded by horses and cows or whatever, and I completely agree that if they become a nuisance, there should be something in for that. My only thing is, I actually did look at the code before we bought here, and when I read it, I thought it said that I could have chickens on less than two acres, and I think my confusion was the term plotted subdivision. That, I assumed subdivision meant like what we lived in in Georgia, sort of a suburb-y closed area, even if it had its own name or not. Living on Donner, I was like, there's absolutely no way we could possibly be in a subdivision here. That was my confusion. So my only request is, I don't think I'm a stupid person, I think the language needs to be a little clearer when you revise things, so that someone like me, who might be like, I wanna, I'm buying a house, I could go anywhere, but I'm choosing New Franklin, I wanna make sure I'm up to code, I really thought I did my due diligence, and it kinda stuck to find out that I didn't.
And, and that's exactly your point of what we were working on before the meeting started, of, of, of looking at our code, and, and our consultant, that's, one of the things he said is, it needs to be written in plain language, where, where people can read it, find what they're looking for, easily find what they're looking for, and be able to read it and understand it, without a whole bunch of mumble and jumble, or flipping back and forth and that. So we, we are absolutely, as, as we speak, we are working on that, and, uh, we, we hope to really make that a worthwhile document for everybody.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Mr. Cos, I want to think, the term subdivision, I mean, this is an age-old term, so houses out here are forties, fifties, sixties, when they were built, and subdivision, you know, basically was a, a strip of property that would buy up into equal parcels, and that would have been, so that still fits the term as far as the county is, when they were built, compared to our idea of what a subdivision is today.
Yes, and I, and I understand that now, but if this whole thing with the chickens hadn't happened, I would've gone on living in ignorance, thinking, woo-hoo, I'm fine, and not understanding what plotted subdivision means, so I learned something new, which is great, but yes, plain language would be very, very helpful, and E is, like you said, I tried to find other things that New Franklin has on zoning, and it's a nightmare, and, I mean, look, I'm relatively young, I know how to use a computer, a lot of our residents are a lot older, and struggle to find things, and so just having plain language for us is, is really wonderful, that's exactly what we need.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
I, I'm proud to say too, that, that, of council, that it, it didn't take this, for council to say, we got problems with this code, okay? Because this diagnostic now has been in, in the works now for, I don't know, six, seven months, uh, the process, so, there was a recognition prior to this, and it's just coincidental that, that you see the same thing that council saw, to put in motion the diagnostic that's now results in a point where, I think we're probably ready to take that next step and, and put this thing up.
Yes, ma'am.
Me. I'm Jennifer, I am said complaintant that received the letter, I wanna thank you all for showing up and support. I a hundred percent agree, there needs to be regulations, there needs to be rules, um, we personally only have hens, I don't like roosters for obvious reasons, I, my neighbors are here, they loved my roosters, um, they can attest that we keep a very clean, they're actually my, my kids' pets, they're all named, uh, funny enough, I had my first one escaped today, so she is now in chicken jail. chicken jail. Her dog coop, her dog pen inside the coop, so she will no longer be running around. So I definitely appreciate all the support and everybody showing up here. I love, thank you for taking the weight off my chest, knowing I don't have to, within 10 days, get rid of our chickens. I really appreciate that and thank you guys all for having us here. Sorry I started all this. I was just trying to figure out what to do, the complaint, I completely agree with you through us. If my neighbors complained or had any issues, they've been for sure letting me know. I have a really good suspicion on who this was and it has nothing to do with me or my chickens. It has something to do with my kids and making a personal attack on them. So, and they don't even live anywhere near New Franklin. So that's why I believe, that's why it was that anonymous. So my neighbors and my friends can all attest, they are very spoiled chickens, they eat better than most of us, they love steak and actually our chickens.
That's kind of scary.
Hey, the purple bird would be there.
So my name's Amanda and we live over on Fairland, so technically in Franklin. And we are lawbreakers, we have chickens. And this girl has named them all, so yes. I don't know how much this weighs into anything. I'm an ICU nurse, so like when COVID hit and the world was ending and there were food shortages everywhere, I think a lot of us, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but the people that I know in the chicken community wanted to have like food sustainability and, you know, a lot of us aren't just chickens, then we're gardening. And I saw something on the Facebook post about compost. Compost too, I don't know if that's a lot. That was on there too. But I don't know, I don't know if that should weigh in or if that shouldn't weigh in, but everything that I've read and followed to project for 2023 is like chicken shortages, egg shortages, food shortages, like, and here we are. And the chicken people I know are just community people. I mean, we walk through our neighborhood with a wagon and get people eggs, because they're $8, so it doesn't end up me. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if that weighs in with where we're zoning or, you know, if the cutoff's gonna be one acres and somebody has like half an acre, .25 acres or, I don't know, I just, I'm hesitant for there to be a size restriction when the economy and all of this stuff is playing in and all these shortages, especially chicken, especially eggs, and, you know, you could be right on that line. I don't know. I don't know how that plays into the wording, I don't know if that plays into the decision-making, but that's just something that weighed heavy on us and so many in our community that chose this path, so.
If I could just make, make a quick comment to that, if, I like the idea of distance from your neighbor's house more than acre. You can have a seven-acre property that's 30 feet wide and acre per feet. House will be.
My name is Wendy Wilson. I live on Rollins. I am a customer of, never, and I have no desire to have chickens ever in my life. I'm not a farmer, but I want to support local people. So we probably buy three or four dozen eggs every week from local people because that's the kind of food that I want. So I'm not a participant, but I want to be able to support my neighbors who are doing those things.
Mark Toreman.
So to follow up on Jane Joyce, my name's Simp Rollins Cooper, I'm a little changing it, just got married. I live on Akron Avenue, I've lived here since I was nine years old. Growing up, I was in 4H, I had horses, I have been involved with sheep, goats, I now have chickens, crazy chicken lady, the math is real. I hatch my own eggs out. I don't have a rooster at this moment because the last rooster we had was horrendous. And due to my neighbors, because most people I would like to think are considering us as neighbors, we did get rid of them. So going forward, when you guys do put together a committee and we change the wording and we really look at it, I know people are going to want to limit the amount of chickens, limit roosters, and I get that and I understand that. But there are ones of us that, because there is a chicken shortage, instead of paying $7 for a chick, which was $2 three years ago, I go in my coop for free, grab my eggs and stick them in my incubator, and that is how I keep supplying myself with chickens, feed my family, supply my friends with chickens. So I just would like to make that known, that like I really hope that's taken into consideration down the road whenever the wording is changed.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm Mark Sodlack, Road Road. Two things. One, the, this whole subject was addressed by the consultant who's looking at the plan and it specifically says that even more, the agrarian urbanism concept that involves all aspects of food, growing, processing, distributing, cooking, and eating should be explored. These concepts could make New Franklin unique. So something that he'd already suggested talking about. The second thing I'd like to ask about is if this was promulgated by an anonymous complaint, if people come to a council meeting and wanna make a statement, they have to give their name and address. So maybe when it comes to complaints about a code violation, they should also be required to give their name and address? Just a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kate Clapp, I live over on Cumbler Road. And I just wanna say, I grew up opposite of her. Like I've never touched a bird, I've never, I hate farms, can't stand smelling chicken anywhere. And then I moved out here and I married a guy who grew up eating the goats that his family used to raise. And if you're married, come here, it's like, yeah, we can get chickens. Yeah, we can try it. And I touched birds for the first time in my life and I love them. I have a six-year-old daughter who wanted me to tell you how cute they are and they do also, they are all-named, you'll never meet them because you can't eat something with a name. And they're wonderful. I love them. They've really brought the, you know, the prep school background out of me and like I love being sustainable. I love everything that we have, the ability to have to do what we have. We do have one on two acres. But it's just wonderful. And I think if you don't like chickens, you should try them.
I think we've covered it pretty, pretty well. So I appreciate you guys and coming out and letting us know your, your side of the story. We're gonna wrap it up, if that's okay with you guys, and you guys can probably go about your business because we don't have anything on our pendants.
We'll bury them.
Let's hear it with the pledge of allegiance. We will plan on presenting a resolution with the moratorium to council at the next meeting. Those resolutions are posted online prior to the meeting, you can follow it that way. And you can follow how council acts on that. Eventually, if and when it's adopted, then we'll publicize that as well so people can be satisfied and rest easy while we go through this process.
I have a question. Over the last, I don't know, say year, how many complaints have there been?
This is the first I've heard.
Yeah, I, this is the first one that's reached my desk and I can't say there hasn't been a call or two that came in, so, but there's nothing that's, you know, nothing that's resolved in a notice of violation. So I'm gonna, I'm guessing not many.
How many thousand residences?
We got about 13,500, about 5,500 residences, yeah.
All right. I'm gonna wrap up laws and orders, please, at 6:30, aren't?
Can we get anything else, gentlemen? Are we allowed to go straight into our meeting call? Okay, I'd like to call order.
But do we want to give the audience a chance if they would rather not stick around?
Would you rather say, here's a meeting, would you like me to wait?
Yes.
There's nothing on the agenda.
We have over 100.
It'll be America.
Oh, no, no, you're not.
We do have some people that like to play.
I'd like to call order the Wednesday, April 19th. City of New Franklin Council meeting at 6:40. Stand for the mic, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cox?
President.
Mr. Hargit?
President.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stockton. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 5th.
Second.
Do we have a portion of the second, Kelly?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials from March 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials from March 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials from March 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Do we have anyone in the audience that has any comments, anything they'd like to say?
Non-chicken, really.
We have no first, second, third, or pending legislation, so we're gonna dive into our favorite part, the neighbors report.
Oh, boy, here we go. Let's see, I sent out a note, so I think I sent a couple of them, but please let me know if you want to, if your schedule will permit you to be, participate in the National Day of Prayer and the service over in Norton. That will be Thursday, the day of the fourth. We'll have one meeting before then, but I'm gonna get the reservations in here probably by the end of the week. So if you, if you haven't responded, you wanna, if you're gonna be able to, please let me know. We met again on the emergency operations plan. We do have it in final form, there's a few typos, et cetera. So I expect to be able to get that out to you within the next two weeks. There's one piece about our cybersecurity plan that we're waiting on, actually, Susan's attending a webinar on cybersecurity in one venue tomorrow. And I'm gonna be in person, Summit County Emergency Management has one, a three-hour seminar workshop on cybersecurity, so I'll be up at that one. And we may need to plug some things into that, that's just one of the attachments to the plan. In any event, we'll get the plan to you, give you some time to look at it. And then our thoughts are is to try to utilize this workshop format again and have it open to the public, that we can put on TV, and explain what the Summit County, what's the New Franklin Emergency Operations Plan is and how it operates and how it functions in emergency. So we're working on that. Probably 30 days away on that, that workshop. We want to thank again the Portway Kuanas for the Easter egg hunt. It was beautiful. Several of you were there. It's just a beautiful thing. And we got a lot of comments, people really enjoyed the grounds. So it was nice to have it back on the Tudor House grounds again. Another big thank you to the Kuanas for all that they do. Speaking of the Tudor House, two things, a meeting, we have a meeting this week, a virtual meeting and going downtown next week to meet the Board of the Akron Community Foundation. We started some end roads and Borjo Hawk's office with grants, spiritless in that direction to put ourselves in a position to begin, to be, receiving grants from the Akron Community Foundation. I think we're gonna be well-received, we started small, we're looking for some funding for our, under the arts and culture section of their foundation for the, just in support of our community events at the Tudor House. So we'll make that presentation, but the bigger picture is starting to do business with them and understanding, because they are not just limited to arts and culture, they do capital grants in addition. So we already talked to them about, we're continuing to have discussions, the Parks Commission on an inclusive playground. And so while we had them on the line, I said, well, you know, how about, and they were interested. So I think that we plug into that and we get our profile out there. And then we also plug into the, all the various builders who support the Akron Community Foundation. So we're excited about that one. I think the final vote in the Tudor House last evening, this is Wednesday, no, Monday night, there's a local artist, Dale Warren, many of you might know him, he's got a studio on the New Lockwood School Building. He's been a frequent visitor at the Tudor House, he's painted a bunch of venues, we wrote about it, I think, yesterday, maybe before. And he did the most beautiful painting at the Tudor House. On Zoom. And then was even more generous, he donated to get to the Tudor House. And it's gonna be over one of the two fireplaces in the Tudor House, so I look forward to you guys seeing that, it's just a really beautiful piece. So we wanted to publicly thank Dale Warren. In fact, at some point, maybe what we'll do is, I can't, maybe I'll have him cover the painting to, maybe to our next meeting so that we can thank him in person. Let's see, yard waste, I was down there at the end of the day and the, there was a full dumpster, a good-sized dumpster of yard waste that was, that people, and that all gets recycled. So that was a successful event. To be followed, a week from Saturday, the shredding day, Community Shredding Day, you gotta be from here, you have a driver's license or something. Nine o'clock to noon, we'll be right out here. It's a great free event, all that stuff you've been looking, get rid of, bring it up here. Let's see, almost done. The Memorial Day, we are planning on honoring Korean War veterans. We have not done that. And probably aware that the Vietnam, the memorial in Canal Fold recently added a wall for Korean War veterans. We have, I'm sorry, plant, excuse me, yeah, they got a right to be pro for that, not Canal Fold. We have, by our best accurate count, we have at this point in time, I believe we have 47 Korean War veterans who are buried in our cemeteries. So we are, we are reaching out to get some representative families, either families of those folks who may have served. We've actually identified two Korean War veterans. So I think it's gonna be collective, honor, and we'll have some folks who are representative of that group. And I mentioned it now for a secondary reason. If anybody out there knows anyone, if you know someone who's a, who has a family member who was a Korean War veteran, is a New Franklin resident, please let us know that. We'd love to include them in any way that we, that we can honor them. So that's gonna be at our Memorial Day parade. And I think that's, yeah, I think I get everything. Summer recess, if you weren't considering that, I looked in, last year, we held meetings, I think Mr. Daniels was very correct, we went with the first meeting of the month. So we had this, we met on June 1st and on July 2nd. In August, we actually met twice. So we just, we cut out the second meeting in June and July. For selfish and self-centered reasons, I would ask you to consider cutting out the second meeting in June and July because for about 40 years, we were at the beach every year that, that week. And so I will not be here the first meeting in June, so I don't know if it matters strongly for anybody, you know, if you wanna go to one meeting in June and July, and you go to the second meeting, if not, somehow I'm sure you'll get by without me for a meeting.
And probably be preferred. You're saying that you will not be here for the first meeting in June?
Right.
Okay. I would say if we're looking to bone out of a meeting or two, if we do the first meeting in June and then the second, the first meeting in July would actually be July 5th, the day after holiday. So if we were to.
We would skip those two.
The first two, of June and July?
Yeah.
All right, that would take us to June 21st and July 19th, right?
The June 21st, I won't be here, but I told Kelly that months ago. But that's fine, I mean, you don't, I don't have to be here for that.
So we want to see if everybody wants to omit the first meeting in June and first
Or some...
Cancel those.
Cancel those two.
That's why I said omit those.
Oh, yeah.
And keep in mind that we can always call a council meeting if things come up because that will take us almost five weeks between the main meeting and June meeting and about four weeks between the June and July meeting. So if warranted, we can always call an emergency meeting.
That's all I got.
Are we making that official now?
Well, do we have to have a motion? I don't tell you, but did we do that last year?
I think we did. I'll make a motion that we do not have meetings. The first meeting in June, we canceled, and the first meeting in July.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Phil.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
David, that's the Colmore.
Yeah, but nobody killed that.
Jack, do you have anything for the Comprehensive Plan Committee?
Just a little bit. You know, I got talked about a little bit here tonight, which was nice. I also would share that during our zoning review, or this, I don't know what you call this, the diagnostic report of our zoning, what is his name? I'm sorry.
Fred.
Fred, who did a fantastic job of this and a very valuable price. I saw that and it was, I'm glad you made the comment about that because he did a lot for this. But he did a very nice summary of our survey. It was specific to land use. But it'd be interesting to see what the Comprehensive Plan looks like, even though I'm on the committee. I guess it's going to be given to us at the May 4th meeting, is kind of my understanding. Was it virtual? Mr. Setlack, do you agree that's...
I think that she's just gonna show us the graph, the format for what the...
Okay.
It's gonna be. We're gonna discuss if the format she's gonna put it in is okay. I don't think it's content on that May 4th.
Okay, good. That makes it feel a little better. Okay.
I believe the May 4th meeting is more for the task force that was, the ladies that were working on analyzing the writing comments and the one-to-two-word comments and giving us their information that they gleaned from those. That will be incorporated.
Gotcha. So that meeting is virtual. I don't know how the public participates in those. You're not, public is technically not supposed to participate in the meetings, but it's supposed to be an open meeting that you can see. So I don't know if they're recorded. We've had some other virtual ones, but they were usually when we were pinched in between a couple of other meetings. This one, we haven't had a meeting for a long time.
What we probably do is ask Warren to provide a few-only link, like a audience link. She did that for one of the previous meetings.
Did she? Okay.
Get that to Katie. Katie can put it up on the website.
Okay. I have to talk to Katie about that because my invite didn't work, so I gotta, or she doesn't want me there.
Could be, just one chance.
Could be, could be. No, other than that, I don't really, there's not a whole lot going on. It's been pretty quiet. But the data is gathered, so it should be pretty soon. We should be putting it together.
And we're gonna try to have one more meeting of the survey committee early next week to just make sure, because we have, there's been quite some time gone by. I think there were still some loose ends and things that Dusty was gonna fine-tune in the tableau thing. And I just wanted to get together with you guys and talk to Nolan and this evening when communicating with Dusty, make sure all that that has been done.
Do you think that you will get that link on, so you know our page, so people can participate?
She would probably do a push-out on the email, whatever you call that.
No funny.
No funny. Yeah, that probably, that's what I do.
Mark, are you getting...
Can I just say something that's quick? I'm on the lead task force that's been looking at all the writing comments. And one of the questions was, "What do you like least about New Franklin?" And that happened to be the one that I was given to, to go through and categorize. And no one said it was chickens.
Do we have no chicken comments? Does anyone want to follow that? Do we have any old business?
Bring up something. It's, this would have been late fall of '21. I reached out to Channel 5 about the whole Colmore Road Bridge issue and passed some light shed on that. On April 10th, he had reached back out to me about the follow-up on it. I know he reached out to the mayor and stuff as well. He run a, another story on, actually a refresh of that story, April 10th, November 5th. He actually did a nice job with it himself. I don't know. Have we heard anything as far as when that's actually been made out?
I haven't heard any more specific on that, no.
So we got no anything?
We still have anything.
We're still negative?
I'm assuming they gotta wait, I don't, I'm just guessing because it's not in our... Normally with OPWC, you gotta wait till the board of the funding, then you gotta wait till the year after. You know, I mean, then you gotta proceed with the bid once you got, once the funding's locked in, right? You've got that.
It'd be nice if Norton told us where we were in that process.
I don't disagree with you about that.
Unless you go to the bridge on Leaver Road. And then it was boom, boom, boom. That went very quickly. Do we get any new business? None?
We handle it in committee.
Wow. Do we have any public questions? Nothing? And I think, well, we have...
This is fantastic.
I think we have a need for executive session tonight.
We do, and it will require a motion for an executive session to discuss pending court action and to discuss compensation of public employees.
And may I add to that for personnel reasons?
Well, that was covered by the compensation.
Thank you.
So move, boys.
So move. Second. Do we have a first and a second, Miss Kelly?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes. And we'll be joined by the attorney for the city who will be joining us at the executive session.
All the decisions you had made.
Pending court action and compensation.
Compensation of public employees.
Thank you.